We good?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. This is a special council meeting tonight, Wednesday, April 24th. So yeah, this is going to be really quick. So let's start off with just the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up, disclosure of conflict of interest. Any conflict of interest with this particular resolution? Seeing none. We're not talking about that yet. Just hold on one second. You want to read this? Can we get a motion to read by title only, please?
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit and outdoor dining extension to Fred Willett doing business as The Proper Pig.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now, counselor, thank you.
Did they resolve placement of the barriers with the crosswalk? That was part of the conversation.
That's a different location.
Yeah.
That's behind Ole Cannoli.
No, no, okay, but you still have the cross, a crosswalk there at Park and Pig.
If I may?
Sure, you may.
Yes, we have worked with the code enforcement officer and the folks at The Proper Pig. We're going to move the handicap parking over to the right-hand side of where the barriers will be placed so that we don't lose the handicap parking spot. But the crosswalk is not required to be right at that location because there are crosswalks on either side of Common Street.
All right, as long as they got it all worked out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the crosswalk was one thing, but I think the handicap parking spot was probably the bigger of the two.
Right.
Okay, so good. We're going to slide it so that that spot doesn't go. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a vote?
All those in favor? Any opposed? All in favor, passes.
Awesome. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we are moving into our regularly scheduled budget discussion, and tonight we have the folks from the school. So, welcome. All right, so how do we want to start this? Do you, Brian, you're usually sitting over there, so like now you're kind of...
This is during night tonight.
Yeah, no, I think that's fantastic, so...
Mr. Superintendent would like to review the budget.
Yeah, do you need us to use the microphone?
We don't, they do.
I'm just taking the microphone to introduce you to Paula Poehler, who's our finance director, and she's going to provide kind of an overview of our budget, some of the information. And I brought with us just a visual diagram that we put together to show you how the budget breaks down. Thank you.
I gotta move this down because, you know, I'm so tall. Good evening. I'd like to start by just telling you the process that we go through in the school system to when we begin the budget. Starts in about, some people start looking like in October and November. The department heads will build budgets, and then they will meet with the principals of all the buildings and go over their requests, needs, wants. And then the principals will then come over to central office and meet with us. And then the directors of transportation maintenance, they'll all meet with us separately as well, and they go over their budgets. We scrutinize that. We do a lot of the background work. We have a lot of questions. Then we're ready to bring it to the Board of Education, and I believe we started that process in January this year. And then we had budget presentations at every school board meeting and some special ones that we had, and completed our budget just recently, and culminated with the first reading of our budget, which we now would like to present to you. I think Peter provided a copy of the summary sheet, and we can look at that. What that will show you is all the cost centers that were individually going over with the school board over the last three or four months. Starts with special education and goes on down. Nope, the summary sheet right here. So afterward, meeting with all of the departments, this is now the snapshot of the results of all the meetings that we had. So you'll see each one of the cost centers, and you'll see to the right-hand side where it says the budget for '24, '25. That is the budgets for every one of those cost centers. It gives you a little bit of history from the year 2018-19 forward, tell you the difference between the previous year and the increase that asking for for the '24, '25 year. You'll see that the budget is $32,282,264.56. That was an increase of $2,9166.49 from the previous year, which resulted in a 6.64% increase from the '23, '24 budget to the proposed...
Can I just interrupt for a second? Sorry, I don't think we're looking at the same document. So we just have a...
Looking at this?
We don't have that.
We do not have that sheet.
Do they have those?
I don't think we do, though.
No, we have something different in our binder. It's just a summary, really by school, and then it goes through some revenues. We don't have the cost center breakdown.
This is what we have.
Okay. So if you see, I think on your sheet, what you're saying, are you talking this one, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I just went over, my summary sheet, is what you see right down at the bottom.
Okay.
Those are all the individual cost centers, and it looks like you have the history as well. And it'll show you that it's the same. I'm really sorry, I thought you had our summary sheets. I don't know if I have any extra here or not. But those are the totals of the cost centers that we presented, and then at the, and you'll see at the top of that, it says the budget is $32,282,265, which is an increase of $2,909 over the current year.
Yeah, those numbers don't match with what's on the sheet.
This is a 30,000, $30,273, not 32 million.
And you've been quoting 6.9 or 6.7% increase, something like that. We have a 7.8% in our...
This may have been before the update on the health insurance.
Insurance, yeah, yeah.
But this one that I got today is from, I think Bill?
Bill.
This is the actual numbers that I have on my summary sheet.
What Bill sent us today matches what...
Yeah, it matches what we have. So I guess we're not looking at the same...
Oh, wait, sorry, wait, okay.
I don't think so, not in this building.
I got in this packet.
But we need copies.
What we could do is you could, if we don't have a copy here, you could put it, if you have a digital copy, you can put it up here.
I think it would be really important to Patty if they had these two sheets, which is...
Yeah, I got both of them.
I'm really sorry, I didn't realize you didn't have them.
Yeah, not your fault.
And I...
We...
Yeah.
So I had this packet. Did you get a packet, oh, we got it today. Did you get an updated packet at the last budget meeting?
Yes.
So...
But we have the schools.
But I have schools in mine, 32,282,265.
That's what I have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven, well, total revenue, 7.8%, 6.6% change in school operating costs.
No, I don't think we got that one.
In the new, in the updated...
So whatever was passed out when I, because this was on my desk this morning.
Is that page 92 on the updated stuff?
92, 94, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I have here.
Right there. You've got it. 6.6 total costs.
Net cost over/under 4.5%?
Yep.
Okay.
In the back of the updates, very back page, page 92 of 94.
The 92 of 94 that I have is this...
Is probably the initial one.
Yeah, it's the eight.
Yeah.
No, it was, you were given an update last week. We were given an update last week, and it's in the very back page of that.
What number should we look for?
If you look at school operating costs, 32,282,265.
And I think when Patty brings back the copies, it'll be so much easier. Because it'll follow the same.
6.6. Well, 7.8 is the total school revenue.
No. No, I think we've got all ones.
Remember the software is supposed to be 4.5.
There's 92 out of 94.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's 92 out of 94 in this one, too, so that's not really helpful.
But we've got two different 92s and 94s.
I always wonder why people are looking at me funny.
I thought you were giving them funny numbers.
I'm thinking, whoa.
I don't have it in my book. I mean, unless it's shuffled in here somehow, I don't know where it is.
Mr. Manager, I would suggest that maybe in the future they have version numbers, that they all change.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So what we do is the date is on the bottom.
Yeah.
Yes, I requested that, too, last time.
We always do the date.
Yeah.
And we do it by date. So when we look at a new version, we just look at the bottom.
So the one that we have from the schools, and do they have, they don't have this one, though, right?
Patty took, is making copies.
Okay, I thought they had that, too, so I apologize.
All right.
Well, we're waiting for that.
How was school vacation week? A distant memory now, probably.
Yeah.
I'd like to say there was no major issues.
Can, while we're waiting, can I, so I've had a number of constituents reach out to me and ask questions, and I have a few of my own that I don't know that I need the absolutely correct budget in front of me, but I'd like you to talk about them a little bit. Do you have a sense of, well, first off, how much does the school district spend on materials for their teachers? That was a question that came up.
Well, I...
If you look at this, sorry, I'm not on the microphone.
84 cents. Yeah. I have a, when I get to the, after I do the summary sheet and the revenue sheet, I was going to go over the whole breakdown of the budget on what...
Yeah, maybe we should just, we should just make it comes out of context.
All of our budget consists of...
Okay.
Please, yeah.
All right, okay.
That's good.
And I was going to give examples as well, so I think that would probably answer that.
I could talk about something I read. I saw it just tonight, and I was very impressed. Behind the, at the high school, behind the cafeteria, there's a walkway they built, and it's kind of like this. And then it's a step down. And then there's a big area for a tent. But then they took the walkway, so it ends over here, and they pushed it through that area down to where the, I guess the parking lot. And I thought, I've never seen that. That was so clever, the way they did that. So you, so the walkway is definitive, the walkway, but it goes through a paved area that has its own design. You know where I'm talking about?
Yes.
It's very cool.
We did that at the very beginning of COVID, when we started to bring students back. We needed outdoor instructional space. And that, that area that you're talking about is adjacent to where the music room is, so it allowed the chorus and the strummers to go outside where they could, because at that time you couldn't sing indoors, couldn't play instruments indoors.
Yeah, I didn't know what we used more of. I guess I'm just commenting on the architectural.
And they use it, they've used it for like performances, and it's a cool space.
There's a, isn't there a rock band festival out there?
Graduation is there.
Right, right.
Yeah. It's a cool space. Does everyone have this one first?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was this...
Thank you.
Well, this looks like documents that, from the public school that you provided.
These are ours.
But you said Bill sent you one this morning.
Yeah, he sent me one from you, from you that.
Yeah, okay, so that's the one that I guess some of us have, some of us don't.
Right. That one is not what I was going to go over because it's, it's the, it does have our cost centers on there, but I was going to go over our revenue sheet, too.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's great. I think a lot of, I think all of this information basically is on here, on the form.
Yeah, and a little bit different on the revenue part, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Little more detail, which I was hoping that, you know, so you could see more detail.
Right, great.
So on the summary sheet, that's, that's the cost centers that I was talking about that were presented to the board individually, and then comes up with $32,282,264.56, which is what the increase is and the difference. So the difference, the increase on the expenditure side is 6.64% from the current year that we're in. So that's the budget that we presented to the board, and then we presented to them the revenue sheet, which at that point in time is how do we, how do we think or hope we're going to pay for this? So that will take you to the second page provided, which is the revenue sheet, and that's the one that has history as well, from 2018 down to the '24, '25. And the first section would be the state revenues. And as you can see, that was a really big help to us this year. $19,737,680, 600, oh, yeah, right. $19,737,686.41, which was an increase of $1.4 million over the current year that we're in. That was a huge boost for us. That was, that was great news this year when we got that.
I'm sorry, Paula, which line is that?
Right to the right, under the '24, '25 column. It has the budget, is the first thing.
The subtotal of, okay, got it.
And then the next section would be the state subsidies. And that's where it's the $19,737,686.41. And that's a $1.4 million increase in the current year that we're in.
Yeah.
So that was a major help, to say the least, to us this year. The next section goes to where we think we can come up with school revenues, not, not state subsidies, school revenues, which you can see is the tuition, state agency clients, and things like that, where, and then we also have where we have the business office for Winslow and Bassaville, and where we, we can produce revenues from there as well. So that came up to the $800,000. Then we go over to what we're going to put forward out of the undesignated fund, if so needed, to balance this budget, which is the $300,000. And then it goes down to some shared programming, where we get from MMTC some revenue to do their business services, as well as they contribute over the year for utilities. Then it'll go into the adult education section, and that's where they'll, what we get from the state for adult education subsidy. And then we share our Director of Adult Education with Oakland, and we get a revenue from them. And then we have our local, where we have our enrichment program, where we charge for those courses, and that's the revenue that she anticipates bringing in from that. So the adult education is $272,000 of revenue that we're projecting.
Why is the local contribution less?
Because she wasn't bringing in as much revenue than she did in the current year. So she lowered that revenue.
I see. And that's because there are less people engaging with the program, or?
Well, I think it's a combination, yeah. And it depends on what courses are being offered, what people are interested in. And we're trying to build it back up, because when we had $57,000 in there for the current year, and the year before it was 50, we weren't, especially during the COVID times, we weren't bringing in that revenue because we weren't having a lot of those courses. We're building it back up. Hopefully, next year, that, that 42 will go up again. It looks like we're on target to make that 42 for the, for the, well, for the current year, and maybe a little bit more. But that's what we're anticipating for our enrichment programs. At that point in time, it'll, what our, we can produce for revenues is, is the $21,201,000, I don't think my reading glasses are too good, $62.90. That leaves us with the asking from the city for $11,081,201.66, which is a 4.55% increase over the current year, which that increase equates to $482,000. However, you know, one thing that I wanted to point out, out of the $32 million, you know, we were, you know, between the state and the local, we were able to produce the 21,2 for revenues. So then I know you have a pie chart? I think you have a pie chart? Okay. So that gives you a snapshot of the entire budget that we just talked about of the $32,282,264.56. Out of that budget, salaries and benefits take up 85.6% of our total budget. 2.5% is debt, debt service. 5.1%, I'm going to give you some examples, is fixed costs or anticipated costs, and I'll, I'll give you some examples of what I mean by that, 5.1%. In general, is 6.8%. So to equate to that 85.6%, for the salaries and benefits out of this $32 million budget, the salaries and benefits are $27,622,312.50. That's, that's personnel. Fixed costs, maybe that's not a good word, maybe I should have put anticipated fixed. That's $1,641,789.13. What that is, examples, motor fuels for the buses, electricity, fuel oil, natural gas, propane, water, sewer, telephone, maintenance for the buses, insurance, legal liability, fidelity. All of that is what is, makes up that $1.6 million. We go into debt service, which is our bonds, leases with, for copiers or buses, computer leases. That's $802,967.16. After that, what I call general is $2216,153.26. That, that part comes from, which will answer one of your questions, is for supplies, supplies which would include supplies for the classroom or textbooks or anything like that for the classrooms. Out of that 2.2 million left over is 1.4 million is for that. Equipment, $272,000. Staff development, $56,650. Dues and fees, $82,904. And then the remainder is $399,915.80.
So all that's off of some sheet that we don't have, though? Those breakdowns that you're reading right now? Am I, yeah?
I can give it to you. I made this up just so I know the examples of what I'm talking about.
That's great.
But the biggest point is, you know, with the schools, 85.6 of it is, is personnel. Oh, another, another thing, I'm sorry, that I wanted to say was, we were very fortunate and notable this year because with the health insurance, and we've always said when we, we don't like to present the entire budget to the school board or to the city until we kind of know that figure, because it could be good, it could be bad. And so this year, we were notified that the insurance for the schools could be the high level of 11.5% for anyone in Maine, for an education, and we only had 10% in our budget, so we were really kind of concerned about that. The lowest was, could have been 2.5%, I think. So we were anxiously awaiting, because I know in the current year for '23, '24, our increase was 7.97%. So we didn't have a big savings last year in that health insurance. This year, when we got it, we were ecstatic, it was 3.23. So, so on this budget, how we got it to the 482,000 is when we got that insurance savings, which was, we took it right, right off so that it would lower the tax obligation, but it's, it was $362,392.4. That was a huge blessing for us this year. So we just got that. It was thrilling. So, so that's how we ended up with the dollar figures that we have tonight, which... which is, it is a four point five five percent increase. But it was kind of scary, because it was quite a bit higher than that before.
Counselor Gagnon.
I just had a couple sets of questions, if I can run through them. In terms of the salaries and benefits, which, what percentage of the eighty-five point six, which you say is, you know, contracted? You know, was, I don't mean contract, but you know, the contract that the teachers have, right? Because you have more, you have people who are not, they're not covered by contract, right? Oh, by union, I guess is what I mean.
Well, yeah, we have some that are not covered by union.
I guess my question is, what percentage of that is, you know, something that was negotiated that's, you know, kind of, can't be changed at this point?
Probably, probably a huge, huge chunk of it, because it would be the teachers, the ed techs, the bus drivers. Contracts.
Secretaries?
Secretaries, yeah.
Janitorial.
Personnel that are not on a collective bargaining agreement, the only people that would be, would be part-time coaches.
Those aren't, those are not substantial amounts of money.
And you, and administration?
Administration.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I assumed. So it's not one union, I assume. So where are we in contracts, like first year, second year, third year?
I think we have to start negotiating next year.
Yeah, the teachers and the ed techs, their contracts expire, expires this year. So it will be negotiating next year. And that's why when, if you look at the revenue sheet along the bottom, you'll see the last two years, you had a ten point eight one percent increase and a ten percent increase leading into this fiscal year. Those, that, those increases are directly tied to the salary increases that the board and the city council worked on together to bring our contracts up to a competitive level.
There was mostly the teachers and the ed techs. Those were, done some serious revamping.
That gets to one of my questions. What is that percentile? Where, where do we stand in terms of similar school districts in the state, in terms of our conversation?
So we don't, we try really hard, we don't compare ourselves to school districts in the state. We work really hard so that we can compete for teachers against Winslow, you know, Messalonki and Fairfield. And that, that's where we, that's where we lie. We were at the very, very bottom. We moved ourselves to the top, almost, close to the top. But as they negotiate their contracts, we will always be in that chasing. We had reached a point in Waterville, to be honest, where we'd over-negotiated. I'm going to be honest, and I've been involved in it. We had over-negotiated contracts, where we were, we're not giving enough, we weren't giving raises, and we were not able to hire or attract the best teachers. We were getting our third and fourth choice, yeah.
Yeah, this is my concern.
Yeah. But we are now. Now we have brought, I mean, the city coun, you got, they helped a lot. Last year, this was negotiated with the city council. The police were in the same boat, we were really in bad shape, we were not getting our, the teachers we wanted. We're going down to our fourth and fifth choices. I mean, we're getting, you know, they were saying, look, we can go teach in Messalonki and make five thousand dollars more. And we're like, yeah, we know. So that has been corrected. Now we have to maintain that correction and hope that they don't, you know. It's a competitive world, and we just have to try the best we can.
And so then, where does the region fit within the context of the state? To try to get a sense of what that arms race with our near neighbors is going to look like?
It's exactly what you think. If you look at Southern Maine, they're paying a lot more, and Northern Maine is paying less.
So when you say a lot more, five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars more per contract, is that?
Yeah, yes.
It's really, it, it can become difficult to compare without, because the other thing you have beyond just, everybody's pretty much starting at the same point now, because the state mandated a minimum starting point, and everybody's there.
Mark, sorry, Peter. Where you start to see the variation is the number of steps it takes to get to the top levels now. In Waterville, you've got to be here for twenty-nine years before you get to the top level. Other districts have sort of condensed that, so teachers can get to that top level sooner. So it's difficult, you could compare an average, but the average doesn't say much. We don't have a lot of teachers. We have a lot of teachers that are within the first three years, and we have a lot of teachers that are twenty-five plus. And what we're hoping to do is keep, keep them around, so we can get them to the, to the middle of the scale.
Hold on one second. Counselor Gagnon, you, I'm sorry, you have some follows?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for those answers. But the second thing I wanted to ask you about was vehicles, transportation. Do you know how many vehicles the district owns?
We have a.
I'm sure most of them are buses.
Yeah, we, we have like.
No, but you don't know exactly what the numbers are?
Well, we have, I have a spreadsheet, but I don't think I have it with me. We, we have eleven buses on the road, and then we have maybe five or six spears, and we have five or six vans, I think.
Maybe, can you just like email to me, maybe? I'm just curious about it. And then the other part I was getting.
They are in a report, I just have, I can absolutely send it to you.
Thank you.
So one of the best things that's happened to us through COVID, several good things, but one of the best things was buses. So we had a very old fleet.
Yeah.
We had a ton of buses, over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And we were getting, and you can get from the state, we were lucky if we could get one bus.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I guess I'm just looking at the overall picture and what the city owns.
Not only do we have, not only do we have a good fleet, we have a young fleet now.
Yeah.
So we're in very, much better shape. I think we only have a couple of buses that are over a hundred and fifty thousand.
Now, in terms of fuel, is the, is the city side and the school side, you know, sharing, have a fuel contract together for both the vehicles and heating fuel and whatever? In other words, is there any type of group that?
Yeah, we, we, we went into the, we put out to bid with, it was Waterville, Winslow, and Vassalboro.
Schools?
And cities.
Oh, and cities?
Yeah, yeah. There's, I think for diesel, I think we just went with what the city had. Diesel wasn't part of the bid.
So the numbers Matt gave us during his presentation are the same numbers you're all?
Should be the same.
Yeah.
It should be the same for us.
He provides those to us and tells us that's what we're going to pay for that.
So wherever, whatever you're paying for regular gasoline is what police cruisers are paying?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the fuel, I think you did a low thing on the same school, two point eight two.
Yeah, it was low. We got a good deal this year.
I, I have a follow-up in regards to that question. In regards to where, you know, the, the school fleet, are we using the, the fleet to let go, say, for instance, out of Waterville to pick up students that live perhaps in other communities?
Not, not the buses. Sometimes the vans. The vans are traditionally used for students that live in Waterville, that are attending programs that are not in Waterville.
Okay.
But we also have an increasing homeless population. That could be a student that may be living in Waterville, but attends school in another district under McKenney-Vento, or vice versa. So Ashley Poole, who's our transportation director, typically coordinates with other districts, because the, you, when, when you have a student that lives in one district and attends in another under McKenney-Vento, unlike if it's a superintendent's agreement, you are obliged to provide transportation, and that responsibility is split fifty-fifty between the districts.
One second. Can we just, there's a lot of questions happening, and can we just get recognized? Can we just bring that back to order, please? Sorry, Counselor Green, I know you've been waiting.
Thank you, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just really interested in a high-level view of, of the budget. And I, I appreciate this, this breakdown, because I think it is very clear to see how the costs have risen for the school. But I'm wondering if you can speak to, and the homeless population isn't on here. Hopefully, that's because it's smaller than fifty-two students. But I think that's another reality that we have, right? That we do have students in the schools who are homeless. So I just, I'm just interested in, you know, what this snapshot tells us about the schools and, and the costs and the needs. I noticed that, you know, not surprisingly, special services is up ten percent. But also, the, the Mitchell and Hall schools, whereas the high school and the junior high have fewer cost increases. I'm just wondering why that is, if you can speak to that.
Well, you can speak to the junior high, that was, so part of it is a result of COVID monies.
Okay.
Okay, so we had.
Microphone, Pam, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, we had, we've put into learning specialists in all the schools to help bring students who are behind as a result of COVID. It was covered by COVID up until this year. So this year, we had to find ways in our budget to cover those positions. So there's a reading specialist and a math specialist in all the schools. It was, I mean, I just think that the junior high, I mean, you can speak a little bit to it, were very creative in how they were able to.
Programming.
Program, how they worked their programming, so that they did not have the increases in that. And that's where those increases come from. But where, the Mitchell School, creative programming isn't, is successful with kindergarten till grade three. You just have to do the work.
Well, that is where children are learning to read, isn't it?
Exactly.
So it does make sense that the resources go there.
Yeah.
And how many positions were added?
There were no, there were no new positions added to the district. What happened, though, was we had, at one point, we had nine positions that were paid for with COVID money that's no longer there. So we had to.
Right.
Prioritize those, and fortunately, we were able to salvage those either between the local budget or Jen, who's our assistant superintendent and manages a lot of our title money, was able to absorb some there. So that preserved positions that we implemented at the advent of COVID, but realized that without them, we really wouldn't be able to target the learning goals that we needed. So for example, it's a, it's a social emotional learning teacher at the George J. Mitchell School and a, and an ed tech to support them. I got a question earlier in the day about, you know, how we address bullying through the budget. And it's a tough question to answer, because I can't point to a line in the budget and say, oh, there it is, because it's, it's really a philosophical change that we've had. And a lot of the work is in policy, but it's a position like that, whose design is to teach students how to interact with one another, how to manage their emotions, how to self-regulate. That really, we, that's where you, we invested in the, in the Mitchell and the, and the Hall School. The Hall School has a dean of students position now, because prior to, the only administrator in the building was the principal, which you'd say, oh, it's only two grades, that's enough. But if there's a dysregulated student, the principal's dealing with that, and all of a sudden, they can't be the principal. So that's how we're addressing the other needs of students on top of the homelessness, the English language learners that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green?
So these are nine positions, a total of nine? I mean, they're new to the, they're new to the budget.
Well, they're, when you say they're new to the budget.
No, no, I understand that they, they came from, but.
They're not all over budget.
They're not, not all on this budget. Some are in titles.
Some are absorbed by titles, that has nothing to do with local.
Federal grants.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
But, but short of COVID this year, because that money's gone or whatever, we're talking about, however they pay for, nine new people. Or positions. I shouldn't call them people, because they've been in the position, right?
For three years.
Yeah. Now, I, I think I read that, we're a little unusual in that, aren't we? I mean, a lot of the school districts have eliminated some of those positions, right? So we're a little unusual in that we kept all nine. Thank you.
Again, though, Ken, I, I want to explain to you that, that COVID money was one pocket of money, that's gone. There are federal titles, that's not in this budget.
As revenue?
It's not.
Why not?
It's grant, it's like grant money. It comes to you with specific.
Income.
Well, it comes to you specifically to be used for specific purposes designed by the federal government, and you're, you're responsible to them to.
I understand, I guess I, like, my criticism of that approach is simply that, you know, federal government says, hey, we got this money for you, you know, and then you get very comfortable in that, and then the federal government pulls the money, and then, you know, you know, we end up getting stuck. COVID is a different animal, I know altogether, but, yeah, I'd like to see a complete budget, I guess. I mean, it's all money coming to the school, one way or the other, right? Anyway, I'm, I'm just, I, I'll tell you what my overall concern is. Like, I don't, personally, is, I'm not going to, I can't support tax increase on the city. So anything that the schools do that are above, you know, from last year, then it's going to have to come from the city side, I guess. You know, in other words, it, you know, if we can't find more revenue, we can't find more grants, if we can't, you know, shave here or there, then, then what? You know, we're at nineteen point eight mils, one of the highest in the state.
But the CARES positions didn't add money to the local budget, because we.
No, 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 don't, I know you're getting to a specific. I, I guess I'm trying to tell you, you know, big picture, where I am anyway. Great schools, and in fact, Mr. Mayor, I have to, you know, I, I teach adult ed, so I sort of have conflict, but here I am. You should put my money in adult ed, but I'm just trying to, I guess, just present my concern and what I hear from people. I'm the newest counselor. When I was running, you know, I, I talked to a lot of people just, you know, within my neighborhood, and it was property taxes. And how high they are, and how we can't afford, you know, people can't afford to live in a little. So I'm just, it's a big concern that we all have to be concerned about, I guess. Thanks.
Counselor Green?
Oh, I was, I just was looking for clarification on what we were discussing about the title money. So were you saying, you were saying that there's, there's federal money that comes into the district to pay for positions, and neither of those are in this budget? Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Counselor Green?
So you're asking for a six point six percent increase. We have these nine positions. Inflation averaged across the past year was approximately eight percent, right? We had an eight percent increase in inflation this past year, but you're only asking for a six point six percent increase in the budget. These nine positions, no matter how they're being supported, are they enough? I was the one that asked that question about bullying. I had one of my children targeted this past month. Two close acquaintances that I know had both of their children bullied, one of them quite severely, in the past year. Are these nine positions enough to create a safe, nurturing environment for our children? Those young people that experience that, they're going to remember those experiences their whole lives, right? And I know that all of you in the administration, all of the teachers, it's an incredibly dedicated team that you have put together, and you abhor these kinds of incidents. Of course, it's not the kind of thing you want to be talking about. Do you have the resources, these nine people, that you've managed to save, I think remarkably, that you've, you've managed to save by getting federal grants to support them, which is not easy to secure, right? That takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of work to get those grants, and to administer those grants, and to report on those grants. Of course, there's uncertainty. But those people are in the building for the coming year, two years, whatever the term of the, is that enough? Do you, what, what are the gaps? What are the gaps? You know, we, we have budgetary limitations on, on this side. We can't give you everything that we may wish to give you. But if we could, what would you want? What do you need to be able to create an environment for our kids so that we can help? so that we can help our young people meet their potential, so that we can help Waterville be the strong, vibrant community that it needs to be, that's predicated upon a strong school district? Healthy community is, the first thing is a strong school district. It's one of the, the main reasons of jobs and school district are the two reasons people move to a community. I know it's a hard question.
I guess, I would, I would say that I'm, I'm comfortable where we're at personnel-wise. I think to address your concern with school safety and bullying, harassment, threatening behavior, it's not necessarily just throwing more people in the buildings. It's, it's, again, it's, it's changing our approach. It's being more proactive about preventative measures. We've established district-wide civil rights teams, K through 12, to start at a young age, educating students about those issues. The SEL initiative, I know it's kind of a buzzword in some circles, but social emotional learning is, it's teaching students lessons that they weren't getting during COVID and some, in some cases are not getting at home. It's how to wait your turn. It's how to manage yourself when you get angry. It's how to follow instructions, wait in line. We did a district-wide presentation last year with Drummond and Woodson on our transgender and gender expansive student policy, and it was not presented with any kind of political or personal opinion attached. It was, you are a public school employee. This is the law, and this is your obligation to it. I think those are the kinds of things that we can do proactively. I, if there's one thing that we're, I think, struggling with but continuing to press on, it's how to engage parents, because that's where we see the biggest gap between what we're trying to accomplish in schools with students and what they're seeing and getting at home. Our Hall School principal, Sarah St. Pierre, has put a parent group together to try to bring them in, to establish that relationship. So, everything is not so confrontational all the time. And then, our policy committee, at least several of us are, are here, but our focus this year was on all of those policies that address how people, staff included, interact with one another. We completely revamped our Section A policies that includes Title IX and affirmative action. We have a Title IX coordinator and a, and a system in place for the first time. We kept him very busy this year because it's not that I'm proud to say that we've had so many Title IX situations, but at least they're getting reported, and people are more comfortable reporting them because they know that something's gonna be done about them. Does that mean that no one is ever gonna get bullied again? Of course not. But we hope that we're, we can never quantify how many we're preventing. We hope we are, but I think we're, what we're looking at is not more people. It's using the people we have in a more strategic way, and so that everybody, students included, feel, feel like they're a part of the solution. So, I feel like I kind of dodged your, do you need more people?
So, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna step up and say, truthfully, we all know this. If the city had some extra money, the schools could use it. We could have some smaller classes. We could have more teachers for per pupil. We could, there's a lot of things we could do. There are a lot of things we'd love to do. We could do some improved programming at the high school. We could offer some extra courses that we're not offering now. I mean, we will tell you that this is a tight budget, and we know it, but we felt that we had, you know, we're proud that we came in at 4.5% for increased taxes. We worked really hard to do it. We don't feel like that, you know, this, of course, of course, there's areas that I would love, you know, but I'm on the school board side. This is the administration. So, of course, there are areas that parents ask for, that people would like to see happen, you know, and particularly programming and class size. Those would be the two that you would look at, because you know that when you have difficult students in your classroom, it's easier if you have a smaller classroom. I mean, there are, there's some very simple solutions to some of these things if you can afford them, but, you know, we've tried to be as reasonable and economical. We've, and I feel like we're doing a really good job with what we have. But of course, you know, yes, absolutely, we wouldn't have any problems coming up with long lists of things we'd like to do.
If we're talking about money falling out of the sky, I would also, and these are conversations we've had before, we're operating in old, inefficient buildings. We have fourth and fifth grade in a 102-year-old building, and we're putting Band-Aids on it as best we can. But, you know, even our other buildings are not, they're not new. They're, they're adequate, but we have to start thinking down the road that someday, the Hall School's not gonna be able to be used anymore, and what's, what's gonna be next?
You know that I am, I think about that a lot. You know, the, the grant that I have been thinking about with the new America Schools Grant, that's one of the many questions I could have asked. I, I wouldn't mind knowing what part of the 1.6 million in the fixed costs, the HVAC is, how many days of school were missed this past year due to heat, not because of snow. You know, what is the potential threat to the school? I'm sure you can't answer this, from, you know, particulates and wildfire smoke, you know, that, that kind of thing, that is in a, you know, kind of a threat. That's hard to quantify. Yeah, I guess, if you're thinking about the one area where, you know, would it be teacher salaries to increase retention? And that was another question I had. What, what is the retention? Is it more positions to reduce class size? Is it materials? And so, I know that it's $6 per student, ends up being about 100 bucks. The PTO kicks in another 50 bucks. What's the average amount that a teacher dips into their own pocket every year? Because 150 bucks is not really that much money for a year, for a classroom of kids. It's really not very much money. So, I don't even know if there's an estimate. Is there, is there an estimate of how much teachers are paying out of their pocket for, for that, for that kind of thing? Where, in all these, and I could go on, you know, in all these lists of, of priorities, which would you, what do you feel is the, would be the most effective, the, the highest return on investment in terms of expenditure? Is that a hard one to answer?
It's a great question, and it's only hard to answer because we've never been in a situation where we could say, look at that. We've always been in the situation where we had to deal with what we had in front of us, and how do we make it better? And the Hall, you know, the most pressing problem we have that we're very conscious and aware of is the Hall School, and we really need to somehow come to terms with it. And we keep talking about the bonding and those issues, but we really, you know, we were so hopeful that we're gonna be able to do that a year and a half ago, and we just didn't have the money. And we can't, we don't have the financial wherewithal to bond more to do that, because, you know, the problem with bonding is that you like, you have to pay it back. So, you have to add that payment to the already budget that we've already, we don't have the, we don't have any room for that. So, that's the, that's the most serious one coming down the pipe, but you're right. We should spend more money on supplies. We should, every year, I sort of argue about our tech spending, because I'm on technology committee, and that's always the first one that, you know, it gets cut. And Will would say to me, well, Pam, I can't be walking in the back door carrying all these new computers and have teachers walking out the front door with pink slips. So, every time we get ready to trim that budget, there are places like that where we have to go. And, I mean, again, COVID money helped us there, so we're in much better shape than they, we were so far behind the other schools in technology that it was embarrassing. But COVID caught us up to date, so that was great. But there are, there's lots and lots of places in this budget where, you know, you absolutely, you can tell by looking at it, that we don't spend enough money on supplies, and we don't spend enough money on equipment. We don't spend, you know, but we're trying to, we still feel like we're offering a really good education. We still feel like we're doing a good job. We are very fortunate in Waterville that we have unbelievable retention, in spite of the fact that we don't pay them as much as they make in other places. So, we've been, they like working for us. They like being here. Once we get them. So, now, we're doing better getting them, and we're happy about that. And, and the city council helped us with that. We couldn't have done it without you.
I, I don't ask those questions because I, I think that I can, we can fund them today, right, in this budget, right? But if we don't have these conversations during this process of budgeting, then we can't envision where we're going, where we want to be, what we need, where the future is. That's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah. I think that, and the, I guess, I don't wanna say resurgent or so, but the, the municipal finance committee that we've kind of realized we weren't utilizing the way that the charter was supposed to, kind of brings us, us together more often, where we can have those conversations. This is what we're doing on the city side. This is what we're doing on the school side, to understand throughout the course of the year so that we're not, well, this is, we can truly understand where those budgets are and what, where the needs are, and, you know, work together to try to get there, you know, to understand your, you know, to your points and to where you guys are at and where you need to be. You present to us, you could go on and on about the things that you need, and it's great. We can talk about it, but we have no money to fund it, so what's the point of talking about it? But you guys are talking about it at your level, because as you get more funding or things that happen, you have an extra or, you know, a set of money, then you're like, great, this is our window to do this, you know what I mean? So, but we do have to have, as a collective group, the what's next for the Hall School and/or all of your buildings, because, you know, I, I keep hearing random things as I've been paying attention, like, that there are certain earmarks or milestones at the high school that need to be met based on certain things that we're not anywhere close to hitting, and there's money for that, and there's money. So, there's like, yeah, like, you need to go to California, win the Powerball, and then you guys are set. Like, we're, you know, we don't have that. But hopefully, well, hope is not a strategy. The purpose of these, these municipal finance meetings is to have a better understanding on both of our sides as to what the needs are and where we can, how we can get there collectively, is, is my goal for these meetings. In the first one, we walked away and like, wow, that was kind of awkward, you know what I mean? But like, it is what it is. Like, that's fine. I'd rather have a meeting and have it be awkward than not have a meeting at all. So, Councilor Green?
Right. So, I just, I just, that was the point I wanted to make as well, that having the municipal school finance committee is essential to looking forward. And, you know, this isn't a conversation that can be really solved in budget season. It needs to start, you know, in, it's in September and throughout the year, and we need to look ahead, and we need to be creative about how we can join forces, because, you know, we have, we have common, common needs, and obviously, the, the health of the community is, is something that we're, we're working on together. So, I really do think, I like big picture. I think engaging the community is important to the parents and as well as teachers in the school. I think the buildings are important, so I look forward to having these conversations way before budget season and really coming up with some, some creative solutions to how we're going to provide the school what, what the school needs and work together with the city. No.
Gabe Flavia first.
So, my thing was, I'm in the spirit of like moving forward. Sorry. Can you guys, okay. So, in this period of movement forward, I see like clearly on the chart, like, non-IEP and 504 plan is decreasing, and IEP and 504 plan is increasing. So, right now, we're at 36%, and, and the like, mental health is increasing overall in the whole United States and all over after COVID. So, like, can we talk a little bit about that? Like, anticipating in the future, do you see this movement? Is it gonna get, is it gonna increase more? And how are we gonna do to like, address this? Is there a plan?
Speaking to the IEP and 504 students specifically, and I think we've seen it with our ESOL population as well. The state average for students identified with IEPs is about 21%. Maine is the second highest identification rate in the country. Waterville, separate from the 504s, we're approaching, we're at about 31% right now. So, we're 10% higher than the state average in the state that has the second highest average. So, it gives you an idea of where Waterville stands. I think there's a lot of variables that play into that, but I think one of them is the strength of our special services department and the strength of the administration and staff as a whole in how we include students with special needs in our programs. That tells me that the, the numbers across the state of students identified is increasing. So, I think with nothing changing, that's gonna continue to happen. And I also think, as long as we continue to offer a strong program, that people will gravitate toward this area. And that's why in the, when you look at the special education budget, it's why it's as high as it is. And you're often planning for the unknown, because it can be a very transient population. We see a big jump in enrollment once the school year starts, because a student might be struggling in another district, and they hear about us, and they come in. So, a lot of the staff increases that you do see, if you looked over the last 10 years, are specifically in that department. We have a lot of ed techs. Some people look at the numbers and say, how can you possibly need that many? But anybody that spent 10 minutes in one of our school buildings will say, you probably need, need more. So, I think that number's gonna continue to grow. We haven't seen, you know, we went for, as far as the ESOL students that have, they're not categorized as special needs students, but they certainly come with their own needs that are different. We saw a jump, we were anywhere between 12 and 17 students pretty regularly, and in one year, we went up to 52. And we didn't know, we, we heard grumblings that that was, that jump was gonna happen again and could be exponential. It has seemed to level off. We, I, I think it, we, we've seen upwards of closer to 70 students, but not all at one time. What we've seen is that a family will come into the city and exhaust the resources that they have, but then move to another community that might have public transportation or something that provides them better access to different services. So, I, I don't think that number, unless something significant changes with housing costs, I, I think we're probably where we're at for that segment of the population. And mental health, it's, not only are there more students that need those kinds of services, but there are fewer services available to them outside of the school, and it's why we have social workers now in every building to work, to work with students and families.
Is that, is that a new thing?
Not, not brand new, but it's certainly, we're adding, you know, when we can and as we go.
Okay.
I just want a clarification there. So, you're, you know, I look at this population chart that my colleague here is looking at, and the student population, the general student population has, you know, we've lost, what is that, about 50% since 2008? However, the IEP 504 student body has jumped by roughly 200 bodies in that same period of time. That, you're saying that's because we're identifying them better, or these students are attracted to Waterville because we have the services that they're looking for? A combination of them?
All of that, for sure.
The overall... The overall trend, you know, taking the student body as a whole, that total number, that's a pretty smooth trend line there. How far out do you project that? I don't know if you have demographers on your staff, but what, what are we, what are we looking at in the future? You know, just thinking about the Hall School and like the building needs and, you know, like what is our population going to be? You know, 2008, that was 15 years ago. What's it going to be in 15 years from now?
Yeah, it's very hard to, to say that. I mean, the elementary numbers are strong, so again, if we can keep those classes intact, we're, we're okay. But again, we're talking about a very transient population. I don't know who here has a long history of a school in Waterville when it was, you know, 1,100, 1,200 people at the high school.
1,200 at the high school.
No, no. I raised my hand because my son was special ed. He did not mainstream his, he did not mainstream a year of school until his senior year. And I was in here every year at this time of the year advocating for, "You can raise my taxes one mill. I don't care as long as the money goes to special education."
And that's the importance of having parents involved. It makes a huge difference.
And my, and I've discussed, a couple of you know who he is and know what he's doing now. He is a positive for your program. That's, and he's one of the biggest things in town, so that's.
My question was going to be real quick. I see a 67, 67% increase in English language learning. Is this something that's, are we going to start seeing more of that, students coming in needing to learn English to?
Yeah, I, that's the ESOL population I was talking about. It's hard to say, Mr. McCormick. We braced ourselves for an increase this year that we really didn't see. I don't know, you know, Waterville has certainly put itself out there as a welcoming place. However, I just don't know if the infrastructure is there for families that are coming from other countries. So, the way I've seen it just over the past two years is that number of 52 is probably where we're going to be at. We did see a little bit of a bump earlier this year. There was a solar project going on out in Benton or Albion that hired, there were, in the neighborhood of 42 Venezuelan families that were connected to that project. The project shut down unexpectedly. So, we had, I don't know the total number of adults that were in the community, but there were eight school-age children from Venezuela that had very little school education before coming here that were living in a hotel in Waterville. We enrolled them in school. We were servicing them. The family ended up finding affordable housing in Skowhegan, but because they're living in a hotel, they're considered homeless. They fall under McKenney-Vento. They legally had the right to finish the year in Waterville. So, we know going into next year that there'll be eight students coming off that because they'll be going to school in Skowhegan. What we don't know is if more will come in to replace them. It's very much a moving target and we often don't get a ton of lead time when they do come in. But we have a system in place that knows how to test them, that knows how to provide services and connect them with other resources in the community. Part of that is the adult ed program. We work with the students. They work with the adults.
I have a few questions about that. How many, how many ESOL teachers do you guys have on staff?
I might have to look over my shoulder at Jen for this, but we have one longtime ESOL teacher that is now sort of our district coordinator for it. So, we aim to have one ESOL teacher in every school building.
How they integrate in their classroom though? I mean, is it a case-by-case basis?
Very much so. We have students that are considered what they call SLIF and that basically means that not only do they lack English proficiency, but they, they might even lack proficiency in their language of origin. So, those students are pretty much with their ESOL teacher until they get to a point where they can actually gain something by being in a classroom. So, it's a, it's a transitional program. Some come in with very good English. We can, we have a system where we can translate transcripts from other countries so we know what courses they took, but it is very much case-by-case and very much changes because they all progress at different rates.
So, I mean, because I just, I, so if there's a student that doesn't speak at all English, is that usually a one-on-one with, with one of those teachers, like until they're able to, you know?
Not exactly a one-on-one, but it's a smaller group and typically, at least in our experience, we'll see groups of students that are coming that speak the same language, so we try to keep them together as much as they can.
In the same classroom?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I had one question, actually, just to clear, just to refresh my mind. Your surplus, right, is, is that like our undesignated fund balance? And I thought there was a portion of it that, isn't it combined or is it separate? So, when you, like, when you use 300,000, does it, is it all counted under one budget, one group of money?
It's all counted for your.
Yeah, okay. All right. No, that's fine. I just wanted to wrap my head around that. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for the school department?
Yeah, what I forgot to ask, the, yeah, the surplus, that reminded me of that. You're taking $300,000 from surplus to, is that, is that all of it? I mean, what is it? What's the balance now?
I just presented that audit report too. I don't have it with me. One, one point.
This is going to be a rough number because it's, our, our entire undesignated fund is just over 1 million, but what we have to remember is because we're home to MidMain Technical Center and CTE funding now comes directly from the state, over, over 200,000 of that undesignated fund belongs to MidMain Technical Center and legally, we cannot touch it. So, our portion is about, is a little over 900,000.
Just one more technical question here. The debt service, the bond payments, can you remind me which line they come under?
They come under Board of Education Central Office.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
Otherwise, they're hiding my salary. Otherwise, they're hiding our salaries.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I got a question.
Any other councils?
I have a question. I mean, maybe this is just curiosity. Under the special education and Main Care, so does Main Care help with special education?
Do you get Main Care clients that come into Waterville and they do?
They do, okay. Is that a big percentage of them or, or is it, is it, or is it like for specific, like speech therapy or stuff like that? Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Anyone?
I, I guess I just want to say thank you for the work on this budget.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it must be very difficult and of course, you know, we, this is the hard part of the year for us. We have priorities, but I just think that children are a very, very high priority and this budget is very comparable to the increases in other departments. So, I appreciate the work you've done on it and all the creativity that's gone into helping kids at this very difficult time for them. Thank you.
I would just add to that, too, also the adult ed program and, and the, all the different compartments that you guys have to really put them all together, really commend you guys for doing that work.
I mean, yeah, if I could just say, I just want to say this out loud because I got asked a question the other day when someone saw the $32 million budget, you know, how many students do you have K-12? And, you know, I said, "It's, it's right there. It's about 1,600, but when you look at this budget, you have to pay attention because between EduCare, between MidMain Technical Center and the Adult Education Program, our youngest children are six weeks old." And I believe we had an 86-year-old woman taking adult ed classes last year. So, we are not a K-12 district. We cater to the entire population and there is a, we don't do it simply for the financial benefit, but there is a financial benefit for housing the Main Technical Center, for housing adult ed, for having EduCare with us. And what a lot of people don't know is the AOS broke up, you know, eight or nine years ago, but our Central Office, Paula included, still serves Waterville and Vasselboro schools. Our Transportation Department still covers that and, and that generates revenue for the district. And, and what saved our bacon this year, it's, our expenditures are up. What saved us is the creative ways that we generate revenue for the district, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn this?
So moved.
Second.